Amen. United States of America. And to the United States, one nation under God.
But any issues that the issues to the. I'm sorry, the issues to the. All right. Uh, item two A, approval of heads dot com to me, agenda items were. Five hundred forty budget minutes. Yes, for now.
We had our regular policy council meeting and we do need to do a minor budget amendment to move funds to purchase a used emergency trailer. To haul out our, uh, long door. Um. Long line we do setting and the funds are there just moving them from one category to the one needed.
Okay, vote in line fourteen, ten, on Mr. Union, late discussion. Let's vote. Motion passed. Item two B, consider and or recommend action with regard to two minutes present. For industrial tax exemption for arrow aviation. Miss Bruce.
Uh, I am recommending that we grant these. Um. Exemptions. They are in good standing. They're, um. Bringing more big, like, to the pair. And the act, the amount that will be exempt over a ten year period is forty one thousand dollars. And in addition, we'll collect. So they get an exemption for eighty percent, we collect twenty percent, so it'll, it'll be additional money coming into us over that ten year period. And then we'll recognize the full hundred percent.
Didn't we come back, didn't it come to us a while back?
No, I checked on that for, um. I thought there might have been a sales tax matter, but there was, there are things in good standing, they didn't have any requests for.
Cause I just, they had something that came up years ago, it, I didn't know. Anyway.
Motion by Mr. Forty. Second by Mr. Derek. In a discussion. Here, let's vote. Motion passed. Item two C. Instead of him, and I'll recommend action with regard to renewal of existence, existing member. Membership. Of understanding with the LSU Ag Center. Miss Bruce.
There is, um, it's just an extension of what we're currently doing, there's no increase. In the, uh, cost to the board, and I do recommend that we continue. That and Mr. Stewart Goyette is here if you have any questions.
Motion by Mr. Forty to accept, taken by Mr. Union, late discussion.
Just a question, so it's twenty eight thousand seven, okay. Finished.
Okay, anymore? Motion passed. Item two D, consider and I'll recommend action with regard to insurance components submitted by Brown and Brown U K. LLC including general liability property. It flooded in Texas, Miss Bruce.
Uh, I'm gonna let Brown and Brown go ahead and speak. Mr. Paul DePlantis.
Thank you, Bill Tomlin. Derek.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill Tomlin, um, if y'all want to start at that top table, that's all the coverage that is set to renew. Outside of y'all package with Munich, so that'd be the auto, the GL, that's an exception for people below. Um. Just going line by line, the properties down when compared to last year. Okay, one million, one sixty seven, forty seven last year compared to the renewal coming in at nine ninety, six thirty one. And that's no change in the shareable value, no change in deductibles, same, same terms as expiry. Equipment breakdown, that's Liberty Mutual, they came in. A little higher than last year, so we went out and got options from another company that provides similar coverage. Travelers, they offer a five thousand dollar deductible for eight thousand, eight forty three annually. And then if you wanted to match what you have existing with a fifteen thousand dollar deductible. They have a six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars a year, so those two options are in the notes below, if you would like to pursue those two options outside of the income. Um. Then you have a professional liability, that's the nurses and our ends we have on staff. That's slightly, a lot of that is rate, the exposure is about the same, the count is very similar to last year.
Backtrack the last one, so the two options we have is. The first one that you have there is the liberty view, is there a duty deductible though?
No, it's a fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, that is, and then the other two for travelers are a five thousand dollar deductible.
Yeah.
So that one's cheaper than the, uh, nine thousand.
Yes, sir, yeah, and they provided a fifteen thousand where you could have more of an apples to apples. Comparison there. And so their fifteen thousand deductible is actually.
So we.
Just under two grand less than last year.
We'd obviously want to go with one of those, those two right there.
Okay, sir. Oh, your soccer liability, Minnesota Travelers, that's a, it's a great company, um. They also provide you prime through your annual basis. Any questions with that, that first tape as far as coverage is? Anything to that?
I just think we need to make a decision if we want to. Go with that travelers instead of, uh, Liberty Mutual and go with the five thousand or the fifteen thousand. What is our current deductible?
Fifteen thousand, yes, sir. All the current deductibles are kind of in that middle of the table, under retention.
And equipment breakdown, that's like the base units and stuff like.
Yeah, if, if something mechanically fails and causes a fire or anything like that, that would be picked up on that policy.
But not the unit itself.
The unit itself, yeah, yes, sir. I don't know, going under the package of Munich. So obviously we got a little. A bit increased on that one, when compared to last year, and a lot of that, or majority of that increase is driven by loss. So if you look on that. Second page or second page, what kind of goes down on it shows you. In the last five years, how much you guys have put in your premium. Versus how much the carrier has paid, so you guys are on the hook. For the first two hundred fifty thousand later claim. So figures are none of that, so I basically took.
You're looking at this right here, right?
Yes, sir.
One victory, see.
So then incurred by carrier, net retention, that's everything over two hundred fifty thousand. And that's what the carriers paid out in the last five years versus. What you guys have paid them in premium. And those last two years, the twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five, they have zeros there, but those claims just haven't, haven't developed enough to, to show up. A figure over two hundred fifty thousand.
So in twenty two, twenty three, we had almost two million dollars. Yeah.
And, and it's driven by one claim. It's an auto claim.
But it's auto.
Yeah, oh, oh, majority of those figures up there are from the auto.
One thing that we might want to consider as a board is. And, and was that? Well, that's what I've been, like. The company I work for, if you get wrecked, first of all, you, you get put out of, out of service, you're not getting paid for that, and I don't know if we have that. That legality to do that with us, but until that, until that accident is finished investigation. You're not getting paid. So that's some of the things that we can maybe start modeling if we can legally. Is to do that, if, you know, we can check into that, and then also start giving. Classes like, like Mr. Vidal says, all, all type of, uh, you know, awareness and things like that because. And also that cell phone, I don't know if that's a big issue right now with everybody, I mean, you sit at a red light. And you can book if you put on the horn because that next person's not going ahead, so. A lot of times they might be on the phone too.
We, we've talked about some, uh, some training as well as some K P, like the problem may. Now, I mean, some like, you know, some autism, they're going to learn and everything, their eyes are going to, or. Turn their heads on, on, after keeping, but. To the point that you, you guys are making, that's, that's probably the biggest issue that we have. And, and, and I hate to, to, to talk about the elephant in the room, but a lot of times when these. These accidents happening, we have the, the footage from the accident. A lot of times what happens is, is historically in the past, I'm not talking about, just talking about in the past. And we haven't, we haven't given the drivers a different consequence for the negligence they've seen, so I think that's part of the issue. If, if, if I'm, if I'm speeding and every time I get stopped by a cop, he gives me a warning, guess what's gonna happen? Continue to do that, I'm gonna continue to do it over and over, so. And I think that's part of the issue that we're having, it's, it's not different, the, the consequences are not different for. When things that we are dealing with as a board, uh, and I'd like to. To just have a ball hard figure of the total amount over the past ten years of what we. We've had to shell out. Because of accidents, that's a lot of money that, that's, that belongs in the wish that we just literally giving away.
And we could give it back and raises it, you know, instead of having, but it's a good point that you made because the company I work for. When we have one of those devices in, in our vehicles, and the F A distracted drive, distract, or if you follow it too close, they'll tell you that also. And either back down or that boss is calling.
Costs too much money, but.
It does, because it, it, it's important that it's been canceled. But, you know, we need to let the driver knows. That we do have another option. We can outsource out, we can outsource because if it gets to the point where it's, it's causing that much problems. Right, I mean, think of all the, all the money we'd save if we'd outsourced, we would have to pay salaries. No, don't get me wrong, it's not expensive, I mean, it's very expensive to outsource, but we might be coming out better doing that.
We'll get to be an eight hundred thousand.
Right?
Yeah.
Plus all the tires you have to replace, all buses you have to replace, cars. Uh, and your benefits. So let them go get hard on, not, not trying to cut their jobs out, but let them go get hired out by that outside contractor. And to where we don't have to be responsible for that, all we do is kind of check to that outside source and boom. Let them have, okay, that. I have to look into the, what would be the cost. For a year. Versus what we spend in on insurance and. And then you don't have to worry about graduation day where everybody calls in or. Or the first day of school and they had the operation, all summer long and said, oh. First day of school, they got an operation, they have to go to the. And then all the, all the other drivers that are actually being faithful to us have to. So the good, the good employees are basically suffering the fact, and that's included in the act, so exactly.
So if you look, the twenty four, twenty, twenty four to twenty five premium was five part of five. There are no, if you want to keep the same deductible level of two hundred fifty thousand that you guys have had for the last six years. That brings a million twenty nine thousand eighty five. I did provide options for higher retentions if y'all would like to go that route, so if you. Choose to take on the first three hundred fifty thousand of every claim, and this is above auto general liabilities, all the lines of coverage. That are included within that package, the premium drops to nine hundred twenty eight thousand nine fifty four. And then. A step further would be five hundred thousand, and the savings would be, go down to eight eleven seventy seven.
So we have, we have two hundred fifty dollars, uh, two hundred fifty thousand, can I do one hundred fifty?
Yes, sir, for every claim across general liability, auto liability.
If you go to three fifty. You, you, they cut you a hundred thou, around a hundred thou. If you go to five hundred thousand, uh, deductible, you go to eight hundred.
Then we might grant two hundred thousand.
Yeah, but the problem is your, the risk that you're.
It's taking on an additional hundred.
One case won't eat up all of your savings, I don't.
Our recommendation would be to go into me and, and hit that lower premium, that those lower deductions. Right. The amount, the amount of, uh, cases we've been getting. The amount of cases we've been getting. Recovering. Especially for who with the, you have higher.
But we definitely need to have staff look into getting some guidelines put in place that, that help.
Staff will redo the, uh.
Policy.
We need, we need to decide on this by April, right?
April nineteenth.
April nineteenth, I would suggest we table it and look into other things. And then, uh. And we got a decision at the next meeting. You know, that way everybody has a chance to pick.
But I, I don't think it'll make it, it's, it won't make a difference on the cost of what this premium's gonna be, so delaying it a month is not gonna make a difference.
Yeah.
But we need to put some protocols into place internally to help this, so that the exposure. Next year continues to go down and the premium will go down.
Again, all this, all this doing right now is hurting their fellow employees.
Yeah. Cause right now we have two fifty, nothing, okay, I guess ten.
Okay. Are you finished with your presentation?
Uh, yes, sir, unless y'all have any questions.
All right, right here.
We need to add in there what equipment breakdown we want, and I would say the five hundred thou, five thousand dollar deductible.
With travelers.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could, yeah, go with the five thousand. Unless anybody has another question, I'm gonna go. Motion with, as Vidal says, motion with that, uh, premium and then also with the, uh, five thousand dollar deductible travelers.
Okay.
I'll say.
I was saying about Mr. Abar. Except the travelers, five thousand, fifty thousand dollar deductible, maybe, uh, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. On the remainder. Okay. Let's vote. Motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, item two E. General fund budget to I.
No, actually.
Oh, I think, back to the liability, was that really a. Brokerage license green house also, that's.
That's in the flood insurance, and that's not on here, we'll have that separate.
Motion there, John, by Mr. Forty, sir, thank you, by Mr. Union. With regular meeting on Wednesday, March twelfth, we stunk out. Please leave some prayer blank. And the boss said, what spirit do you mean? You know, I was, we have to make decisions that will affect the students and staff. Let us work together for the betterment of our system and all involved in it, in your holy name we pray.
United States of America. And to the United States, one nation under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
We, an announcement, an accolade. Yes, we have to tell you, uh, first announcement or first accolade, I'd like to have this. Charlie, um, from Pennsylvania, we have another come up. Um. As you are aware, we have one of our students who was a student of the year. Uh, same that finally, uh, is now a state finalist, and we'd like to. Recognize. This Anderson, Gidri, a big leader, Teshan, remember, she was state finalists. For really fast student of the year. She competed against, uh, a few years at all the state on Tuesday, March eleventh. So the station will be selected of the overall twenty twenty five days, which is given in the year. Uh, and the winner will be announced at a ceremony in May. Looking at it.
Anderson, Anderson, I'm just curious, the next time you'll have a little lunch, I want to know if it's the Gidri smart or the Honjo.
And you have the now, we have this, uh, the Honjo, they provide certificates to send for pre-K staff for fall class observation awards.
So we are going to recognize tonight some of our pre-K staff, and you can see they're kind of standing on the side. Wearing some shirts that say classy, and it's not just because I think that they are classy individuals, uh, they are. But they are also, uh, part of a, the pre-K group and in our school system, they are observed. In the same way that. Regular K through twelve teachers are observed, but when they're observed in their evaluation, it has a two fold kind of. Uh, weight for us in the district, it is their individual evaluation, but we also have performance profile scores that each school gets. And those are based on class scores in pre-K classrooms, and so we are now recognizing some of what we call are very classy. Because they receive scores that were in the excellent rating, and so if you look up, we have twenty three pre-K classes in the district. Currently for our fall semester, this was from, um, the August until December. Of those twenty three, we have thirteen classes that they receive scores which are above a six, this is a seven point scale. Which means fifty percent of our pre-K classes are considered excellent, that is the highest level that you can be on this rating scale. We have seven classes who receive scores between five point two five and five point nine nine, which is thirty percent in the highly proficient. And then we have three classes that were in the proficient category, we want to be proficient or higher, so this says. One hundred percent of our pre-K classes that serve over four hundred students in our district are being educated by an extremely highly, um. Excellent level of instruction, so good. It includes not only our pre-K teachers, our pre-K paraprofessionals, and so we are going to give recognition now individually. And so these are our classes that scored above the six, and so if you want to go to the next slide, Ms. Wendy. We're gonna recognize Ms. Amy Dotrell, Ms. Alicia Vidreen, Ms. Ashley Roberts, who scored a six point four four this fall semester. So we have. Are we gonna take a picture? The, yeah, she's absent. All right, thank you, ladies. We now have Ms. Erin. And Ms. Yann, I think is the only one here today from her room, who is Ms. Erin, Ms. Jamie, and Ms. Ash, so we're gonna, I'm gonna ask you to give Ms. Jamie, okay? All right, Ms. Erin. And Ms. Erin, they scored a six point three nine. Okay. Got it, all right, we have next Ms. Carrie Melisong, Ms. Rochelle Broussard, and Michelle Hubeau, who scored a six point six seven. It's Rochelle. Michelle. Mr. Wilkes feels like we now need to be in the middle. Yeah, no, you're good, he's on the end, yeah. Excellent, thank you, ladies. Next we have Victoria Bro, who was with Michelle, come step back for this, Ms. Marcy Knod, and Michelle Hubeau. Michelle is one of our, uh, paras that kind of floats where we need, so she was in this classroom as well when we had this score, and Ms. Victoria Bro, they scored a six point one four. Next we have Ms. Chelsea Boye, who is with Ms. Lacy Menard, Ms. Lacy's not here tonight, and Ms. Chelsea's coming up, her score was a six point eight one. Thank you, Ms. Chelsea, and then we have Ms. Sherry Tibode, who is with Ms. Tina Gidry, and we have a six point six seven. There we go. Thank you, ladies. And then we have Ms. Hallie Gidry and Ms. Rachel Duga, and if you notice, Ms. Hallie has two scores with the word P card on the side. So not only do our pre-K teachers have to have principals that go in to do observations as well as some district staff. We get the privilege of having a third party observer come in regularly, and this is the P Card Center with U L. That they are considered outside observers, they come in to check us to make sure that if we say this teacher is excellent, they're coming saying, oh, are they really excellent? And when you see two scores, one six two five, one six four two with P card, that's just validating that says, yes, it is true. All right, and this is our premium to stay a primary, great job, so still your primary. Our next school that we're gonna have recognition for. Next slide, is our Greenwich Primary, um, school, we have Ms. Brittany Simon. And Ms. Rena Dobby. Who scored a six point zero. And if you notice, has P card, which means they had the luxury of having the third party come in. And adding Z I A T to this. All right, thank you. Next we have the, um, John Tally and Ms. Peggy Terrio, and they're gonna come over, they had a six point zero three. And Ms. Peggy, I'm gonna do this because she loves, how many years, Ms. Peggy?
Thirty three.
Thirty three years. Thirty three years, eleven on those four year olds, huh?
That's it.
Peggy and Tom. Scoot over a little bit, scoot over some, scoot over some more, let's get out of the camera, there we go.
Out of the camera.
Out of this camera. All right, thank you. All right, and now we're gonna recognize, we have Parks Primary, and so we have Ms. Michelle LeBlanc and Ms. Barbara Nevo, who had a. Double score again, a six point zero zero and a six point four four from the P Cards. And we have Ms. Tiffany Phillips, there we go, and Ms. Lisa Dago with a six point two two. Thank you, Parks Primary. From our state primary, Seem Academy, Ms. Nikki Diator, and Ms. Robyn Bonan with a six point three three. All right, and then we do have our recognized Ms. Allison Snack here from Stevensville, and Ms. Allison, also Ms. Allison and Ms. Thomasina. A double six, uh, score, a six point four two, and then a six point one nine from the P Cards Center, so thank you, if you notice. They have their classy shirts, it's a privilege, not everybody can be classy like y'all, so thank you for watching.
And next would be some scripts?
Yes, uh, so this is important, this is Samantha Robichaud, the Stevensville teacher she's here tonight. Will Mr. Shorty was gracious enough to give me, uh, the reason why I'm nominated, considering Samantha Robichaud has been an excellent coworker. All of the teachers and students have enjoyed working with her, she has taken her new social studies curriculum and made it look all from a middle school student. She was always coming to do it for us in the morning when the need arrived, who's involved with the schools, after care program, and she's very involved with sports. He is the head coach for Baymore, and she's been working with the Ponder, and she's been working with, uh, uh, A P T teacher. Association, parent teacher association, who can raise money to help with sports. He's very generous, generous with the time, he's kind and understanding to those students, and she's been working with, she's, she's.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Supposedly we had, um, a request. For a waiver of subrogation of case that's in litigation, um, if we could add that to the agenda to be discussed and, as I said, considering requires some of those, some of those cases we have.
A waiver of subrogation?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Do we need to vote on it? Vote to add, yeah, so we need to vote to add it on, can vote. Okay, passing.
Mr. President. We often need to remove from, uh, agenda the most six board requests. Uh, please, please, we go in the papers.
Okay. Remove. All right, anything else? Okay, the second agenda. And this time, uh, we think a multiple, the second agenda is, is, or we'll move something out to be discussed. At this time, I don't know, anything emotional to accept the agenda as is, or we move something out to be discussed?
No.
Okay, motion on Mr. Steve, second by Mr. Clay, let's vote on. Go ahead and pull from the agenda, our finance committee recommendations. At this time, I don't know anything emotional to accept finance committee recommendations. Then say by Mr. Durio, the vote. And new business, consider and approve head start policy council recommendations. New hire recommendation, bylaws, infant formula policy, video surveillance, updating emergency consent. Update eligibility selection criteria, memorandum of understanding, and St. Mark Parish Library, this is.
At our last policy council meeting, we did have some new hire recommendations, as well as we needed to annually review our bylaws. Those were approved and made the recommendation by the policy council. We also had to update currently how we administer infant formula at our early head start, so that parents are bringing it in instead of us preparing it on-site. Video surveillance, this is not anything adding new cameras, this is just updating what we had to align more for what we do in our centers. Our updated emergency consent, after having our licensing review in January, there was recommendations by the licensing consultant to remove wording, so we updated that. Every year we have to update the eligibility selection criteria before we start our next year. And then our St. Mark Parish Library is gonna be starting doing reading in our head start centers.
Okay, any discussion? Motion to accept? This is Steve and this is Karen, this vote? Motion passed. Item B, considering or approved, the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six school calendar of St. Mark Parish Schools, you vote on?
Good evening, you should have had it in your package, it's the long page. We would have staff beginning on the fifth, we front loaded most of the PD, they'd be five P days, with students beginning on the twelfth. Um, Mr. Mark always has the issue with us beginning early, but as Ms. Broussard says, and all of those people to get the September check, we have to start that early.
But, Ken, I was gonna say, open for discussion, of course, you were waiting for it, I argue it every year. Uh, and, and I just wanted to know why, okay. On the calendar, we have a whole week left at the end on May. Okay, we can, technically, we can start the teachers' personal development days on the fifteenth. The main reason you have to, and it's because of the pay site. We, we as a board adjusted that years ago, which I think we shouldn't have done, but, uh, and that particular year, they got two checks, two checks for one month. Uh, Steve will probably remember the old ones, but. The, the wording that we had back at that time, you had to have your teachers start on August fifteenth. By August fifteenth, the kids can come back, the, the students can come back at day-to-day, that's just for future reference. Because if I was a kid riding that bus in August, when I knew I could ride it in May, it's a big difference. That's one thing, all our electricity, electricity bills go up in August. So let, a little bit better to run our facilities in May, I'm just saying, cost-cutting measures is what I'm looking at. And if they're really a big issue, when I went to school, we didn't have a whole week off of Easter. We get off Good Friday, even Monday after, that's just one thing. Couple of years ago, we even had the whole week of Monday ball, but then you all adjusted that. And then, of course, we had the fall breaks, but there's so many ways to adjust it. And I think we need to look into that seriously, because we, we in the, we in the red the past couple of days, that, past couple of years. So we need to look at every possible way to start saving costs, because we're gonna run ourself a problem. That's my point, and then also looking at the well-being of the kids in that situation. I said, I say.
You have the one-day fall break, and we're getting PT's parents conference, PD, um, graduation will be the fifteenth, which is a week before. And we're looking at finishing before Memorial Day.
Any discussion?
All I can say is, we better find some money and put that condition, if we're gonna start that early. We're gonna get in trouble. I mean, a couple of years ago, two summers ago, we had hit hundred-degree weather, consist active back-to-back, and. And I, I just wanted, okay, let me ask you a question, who's voting on this, who's coming up with the calendar, is it just staff members?
It's some principals and some supervisors.
Pretty much all twelve-month employees. We might want to, next time, get a teacher involved, and, you know, I'm just throwing it out for you guys, listen, I'll have two years of that, you know, and, and was that?
So we've done that in the past, and it really.
If you're reading a note, how people feel, because in August, I promise you, they can, we're gonna all hear about it. Why I started school sort of.
But it's not anything different than, actually, we start later than I think last year.
But again, I think they weren't wrong too, by the parish, that's just my opinion.
And but, and back to your point about the, the teachers have to work fifteen days. So it has to be before the fifteenth, because there's not fifteen working days. You know, they have to.
Fifteen working days? Because when, you know, they just told us at the time when we did it, we had to start before August fifteenth.
They have to work fifteen days to have earned that month's paycheck, if not, they'll owe us money.
Well, that's something that we need to look into, my, my calculation was wrong there.
Yes. They have to work for fifteen days to break, even if they would leave after that paycheck is received, they would not owe us any money back.
Yeah, they could start, they could, let's see. You push it back a week.
Do you push it back a week, and then you, you add two a week in that, in that month of May? And again, it's, people don't realize it, but you're looking at a serious savings, because you're gonna ask Mr. July, what's gonna happen when we start? Nah, it's gonna still happen, but it's gonna be more at the beginning, always, and by the long period of time.
Would it be a big problem to, to change it? I don't know, I don't think it would be a problem to change it.
If you're in that case, you know.
I mean, the number of days works out the same, but we also have to consider that our, a lot of our teachers live in Lafayette and have kids in school in Lafayette. And then so you have that issue of their kids are getting out. We're, we've always tried to keep it similar from our surrounding parishes, not that we have to cater to that, but I think it's something to consider that. You're gonna end up with a bunch of teachers at the end of the year. I don't know, I, I think, is that something we could poll the teachers about, would they rather start when we start and get off before Memorial Day? Or would, do they prefer coming early in August and getting out before?
Can we do that and vote on it next, next meeting?
I mean, I think that's a simple poll.
Four days, but it used to holiday this seventh, eighth, ninth, and the tenth, we could cut that off.
I think you're gonna get some. I think starting a week later and going a week later, you know, won't get a whole lot, but if you cut a whole holiday out, I, I think you're gonna get some.
Consideration is that one of the, the laws has to do with the extended school year program. Any of our students that qualify under what's called regression, we have to, we have to have the break no more than the longest break during the school year, which is two weeks at Christmas. Therefore, we have to start our E S Y no later than two weeks after the last day, students are out of school. And ended no more than two weeks before we resume school. So if we do that, if we make a change like that, and students don't come back until, say, the twenty-second of August. Then the E S Y has to go through to the seventh or the eleventh.
You got plenty of days that we have in this, this calendar that we have all, that endless is the whole system, like Casey pointed out. They couldn't make it in the real world.
I, I just think that if you start to, you start to eliminate holidays that have historically been established in these calendars. Given the climate, the climate of schools in today's daily age, you're gonna run into a problem with these teachers.
But these teachers need to not complain that they can't get their work done, because it, it's, it's, I mean, sort of, that's all I hear, you know, not everybody.
Well, if we just push it back five.
I know when I was teaching, we all had Memorial, they had to come back after Memorial Weekend, the Tuesday or Wednesday. The, the year is what I told you, that's about that long.
Depending on the schedule, we usually either work finish right before or work two days out.
Yeah, I remember. Third and fourth.
I remember, yeah, in June.
Oh, yeah, sure did.
I mean, considering the heat of the bus rides and all of that, and preserving damage.
For sure, I know we's trying, I'm trying to satisfy everybody, but the number one, the, the number one. Resource that we were looking for is our children, and putting them at the best interest.
But awfully hot in August, I agree with you on that.
So how many teaching days you supposed to teach, it was one hundred and eighty? So how many?
They added two several years ago for professional development, so the teachers go one hundred and eighty-two, they have two additional professional development days. Uh, outside of what the parish, which is one hundred and eighty.
So we could act on four days and still have the fifteen weeks.
Yes, yes, because I think they're working nineteen in August.
Yeah, because the students could start on like eighteen.
They could.
Monday to eighteen.
I know another issue was testing.
Testing?
That's where we looked at our Easter holidays, as it falls in that area.
Tell you what, I'll make a motion to table it. And have staff look at the second alternative, possibly pushing school back a year, I don't know. Without that one, right? But, uh, and then come back next month with two options and possibly bowl the teachers, and anybody, even, even maintenance and whoever you want to bowl. And see if we get a true feedback, and then we can go on to that. It shouldn't make a difference.
That was the time that we had to vote, the teachers were vote on the calendar.
I remember that too.
And I'll tell you the problem that happened, that, that happened with that issue. So many, so many people were not voting because they said that it was already, the board was gonna do whatever the board wanted to do. That's, that's, that was the exact words that the, the teachers said, they said, it doesn't even, it's a waste of time for us to vote, because the board is gonna decide and do whatever they want to do. And that's why I'm just eliminating, we eliminated that part of it, because.
As the truth, we used to vote for the days and we calculated.
We get three calendars, and you choose the calendar you want.
The board.
That's what it used to be, right?
Yes.
But I will tell you what, whatever selection the teachers made was not the selection of the board.
That's why.
And that's why we, we, they, they saw, the teachers not voting.
They know what's best.
So my first two calendars were, we sent three to the staff that they voted, and the one we brought never. Except, so we went to this, I'm just coming up, we want them.
Uh, I said my piece.
I said my own job.
We always used to go after Memorial Weekend, I don't know, see while we're just not do that anymore.
Well, what is our place? We have a vote by Ms. Sabre?
And we'll repeat it.
Yes.
Basically have staff go back and look at the option that we just spoke about, and maybe pushing it back five days, or somewhere as in the next series. And, and if, if you want to fold, I, I would like to see at least the, the teachers in the, in the paraprofessionals, you know, have, have them fold. Now, we also have to realize. The paraprofessionals in the maintenance department, they're twelve-month employees, but they also get off on Fridays. And a lot of them like to tie in a day on the Monday, so they have four-day work weekends during the summer. So that's some things that we, we need to address also, because most of the time, when you're supposed to be getting things done, with the kids going to school and we're short-handed.
So we only talk about a week.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, some of the problems that we may incur, but that's, that's my motion.
Okay, do you have a second?
Yeah, it was Ms. Wong.
Second by Ms. Karen. All right, and vote. Okay. Postpone for the next meeting. All right, next, I don't know anything emotional to go into executive session. Mr. Stelling, you down? All right, first item of business is, uh. We have a motion on student A.
Follows staff recommendation.
Do you have a vote by Ms. Sabre, that follows staff recommendation, you have a second?
Thanks.
Say it by Ms. Fugily, do you have a vote? Okay, let's go back. Student B, I have a motion. Followed by Ms. Sabre, second by Mr. Fugily. The follow staff recommendation, the vote. Motion passed. Student C, we have a motion on student C. Ms. Sabre, our staff recommendation, Mr. Marlin, a second, this vote. Motion passed. Student D, we have a motion on him. Followed staff recommendation, second by Mr. Stelling, the vote. Passed, and student E, motion by Ms. Sabre, follow staff, the recommendation, Mr. Stelling, second, the vote. Motion passed, all right. On the next item would be the waiver of subrogate, and to give Mr. Fred the authority to, oh. Do it, okay, Miss.
Followed staff recommendation.
Right, follow staff recommendation, uh, Ms. Sabre, and second, Ms. Johnson, it is vote. Motion passed. We have a motion to adjourn, both by Ms. Sabre and by Mr. Stelling. Meeting in the ground.